To order the Frontier Regional School Committee meeting at 6:32 on February 9th. Okay, first thing we're gonna do is review and approve the minutes of January 12th, 2016. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second?
I need Bill and Bill. Any changes? There are none. All those in favor accepting the meetings, the minutes? Not accepting? Abstain? We're all good? Abstain, Phil?
He's willing for your left.
Correct. Okay.
I go to the guy.
Yes. Bob's on that case now. Okay, moving along to financial statements. Patty?
Okay, so...
Do you want me to pass those away?
Yes, please, because I didn't get a chance to.
Thank you.
So tonight, Mr. Haba?
It's all right, people are getting attested.
You have 25 warrants. Totally $1,689, 039, and 9 cents. 1, 6, 8, 9, 0, 3, 9, 0, 9. And I'm gonna pass that around so you guys can sign that. So while we're waiting for Lynn to, Cindy to go around, this is the month of January. We are still looking good. I do have a concern about our out-of-district tuition for this year. We recently had two students move their placements. One was a move-in that came, a move-in to one of our towns that came with an out-of-district placement, and we had another student through an agency placement take them out of our school district. So we now are on the hook for that tuition, which is probably going to be over $100,000 for the rest of this year.
Was it one that moved in?
One, no, one moved in, and one was placed through another agency to another placement.
One lived in our district and was placed by an agency to an out-of-district placement.
So somebody...
You can't assume anything.
No, you can't assume anything.
Well, we're not gonna tell you.
So I am concerned, and I'm waiting to get through the heating and plowing season, and hopefully we will have some money there to take care of those items.
Good guy for the out-of-district placement.
Yeah.
Are we gonna get any circuit breaker money on that?
Yes, but not till next year.
I don't know. Thank you.
You're welcome. So that is the only thing of concern right now on the financials for this year. Unless anyone has any questions that I can answer without violating anyone's FERBA laws.
I don't want to violate any, but I'd like to see if we can make an effort to get these before the meetings when we actually study. I realize it was printed this afternoon at 2:12, and you know, I asked before about getting the Buckwheat coming program for winter, and it'd be nice to have the inspection reports ahead of time, so we actually agree on that.
Mr. Decker, you asked the same thing about the warrants. I've made that change for you. I'm doing, you know, we're doing the best we can with what little we have. I have to look at these and make changes to make sure everything's reported accurately. Didn't get to it till today. I'm working on five budgets.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, you can email me. I'll be happy to answer them.
Anyone else? Okay, moving along. Public comment? The public has decreased. Student Advisory Council?
I told her with time to remind her today, and she's coming, but I'm not sure if I clear at 6:30. So I might be on the hook. If Caitlin shows up at 7:00, it is my fault. She doesn't show up at 7:00, it's her fault.
All right, moving along. Unfinished business. I'll turn this over to the superintendent.
Sure. As you know, we've been having ongoing discussions about our concerns for the central office. I've invited Bob Lesko here just to bring people up to date. We have had an air, I'm not going into exact, this is open meeting. We have had air quality studies done, and we have been in discussion with the town of Waitley for possible rental space of their town offices. There are a lot of things that are still up in the air. That certainly isn't a done deal. They have a commitment right now with the South County ambulance system. I was informed today that probably no decision will be made until after the April 28th Deerfield Town meeting, whether or not we would have the option of going there if they pulled out. So in the meantime, I've talked, and thanks to Phil for getting to me some information, a gentleman by the name of Mike Feeny. He's director of the Massachusetts Public Health Air Quality and Environmental Testing System. They are not a regulatory agency, but they are an agency that comes out and they examine the building, they do additional testing, they speak to the occupants of the building. But where they can really be of use, because I think they're probably going to have results that mirror the study that we've already done, is that they can commit remediation dollars to address the problem financially, which I think would be a big help if we had no other option and had to stay. So at this point, I'm gonna do two things. Bob has a checklist of things that he has brought to you that if we do need to remain in the building, things that should be addressed. There are also some pictures. I've given a couple of school committee members tours of our basement space. And I also wanna pass out some architectural drawings of the space if we were to be able to go to Waitley. They would have 3,100 square feet that we could utilize. We would have separate entrances. They would give us probably the same financial consideration that they're giving SCAMS, which is $5 to $10 a square foot. They said that we could bond the entire project, and that was the same deal that they were going to offer SCAMS. I would really love to get excited about this because the office space is frankly ideal. It is handicapped accessible. It obviously meets all the codes. However, I understand their obligation to see the South Penn County ambulance project through as well. I have investigated a few other sites. There aren't very many in our district that could accommodate all of us. I also need to let you know that I have spoken with every principal to see if we had, because that would be the natural inclination to think, could we go into the schools? I have a windowless, heatless locker room in Sunderland, a temporary art and music room in Conway, perhaps half a classroom in Waitley, nothing in Deerfield. And Darius, I don't know if you might have one or two, but...
We have one or two classrooms.
We would have to split everybody up into such a configuration that it wouldn't make sense. At one point, I joked, since I live across the street, I said, "Well, just go to my house and do that." We don't have a lot of options for office space. So at this point in time, I'd like to pass it over to Bob, and Bob, you can hand out your information sheet regarding costs and recommendations. I don't expect anything to be determined or voted tonight, but I'm trying to give you as much information so that you can guide us in what you would like us to continue exploring or go in another direction.
Can I ask, about alternative office space thing, that is, one of the things that was loosely clopped around at Conway County meeting afterwards is the possibility that the Conway Town offices might be coming, that there's a, it's totally premature, I agree, but that we should still be in the conversation.
I said it all.
It's, we should be in the conversation a little bit, that if the town does decide to redo, if the town offices and the town hall, if they decide to redo the town hall, then the town offices would be vacated. That building is wired or modern, whatever.
Okay. It's first I'm hearing that it's on.
That's handicapped accessible.
That's, there are drawbacks, I agree, but it's a building that is less likely to, it's a building that is less likely to kill its current inhabitants and...
Well, I would hate to trade a 1915 building for another 18.
It's an 18, sir.
Okay. There might be some drawbacks, but anyway, thank you for that, Phil.
Probably has two walls.
Pardon?
Probably has two walls.
It does.
You don't want them locked. Bob?
What I've put together is not a project or any specific name, it's not precise what it is, is an attempt to answer some of it, give a lot of background on what's going on there, and another question regarding related cost. I don't have any of that solution in mind myself. I just wanted to get people thinking about the building and how issues there are interrelated. You know, well, I think I'll just kinda put down the list and talk about things. One of the first things on the top here is total square footage in that building. If you look at the entire footprint of the building in the basement and first floor, it's 11,000 square feet. They're using 5,600 square feet on the, excuse me, it should, it should, in the first, on the first floor, they're using about 5,600 square feet. In the basement, there's about 3,000 square feet occupied, and then just tons of stuff put everywhere else in there. The comment that I'd like to make about that space is it's way more than I think we would need if we replaced it with efficiently designed office space. The storage in the basement is scattered all over the place. Offices are unusually large and just, they moved into old classrooms that at one time that's what they were, and now they're offices. So I think those numbers of square footage are very high. With that said, I wanna talk a little bit about the air quality study. The primary recommendation there, the primary problem seems to be related to airborne particulates from dust, mold, and soot. There were really no critical hazards that were identified in the study, but the occupants there did continue to experience discomfort, and there's other significant related building issues which remain unresolved. So from there, I just kinda go through. The pricing that you see here, the stuff toward the top is pre-acted. I had contractors out there who really got some good pricing for that. As you get toward the bottom, I was just taking square foot numbers off of building-related trade journals and that sort of thing, and making our pricing. But I had someone in that does clean. You know, they, they're a hazmat group, they do cleaning, they come in there, they would, as they were cleaning the building, they would run negative air equipment that would keep all of the dust in the area that they were cleaning. And they gave me a price for cleaning all of the horizontal surfaces in the basement of dust and soot and mold, and that's $4,775. That doesn't include opening up all of the boxes and cleaning inside them. But that, from my perspective, most of those boxes on the inside are clean, and a lot of stuff is just open. I think seems to be sorted through, a good percentage of it thrown away. The fellow that did the cleaning talked some about running the negative air machine in the basement and possibly already even buying one and keeping it running there, which would contain any dust that came in the future into the basement. Because the conversation here is gonna lead to the fact that if we spent that $5,000 on that basement, it wouldn't be long, in my opinion, before it was pretty dirty again, because we just did some testing here in the last week or so with the boiler running more, and that boiler just produces a fair amount of soot. And if you can run your finger on most of the surfaces, it's a challenge to walk in the basement and not come out of there filthy. So just cleaning that building is gonna be a very temporary solution, because it's gonna get dirty again. I did put in some prices for purchasing a negative air machine, buying some commercial quality portable air cleaners, a portable dust filter, dehumidifier, some odds and ends of shelving repair, cleaning of being an old gravity ventilation system and sealing it up. I've got pricing in there for storage rental trailer, which is a place that we can move a lot of files out of into there. But if we did that, that's a $75 a month charge if you're carrying it as long as we keep it, and there is some costs for moving and packing things and building shelving to go in the trailer. The next item, replace the boiler heating system, is something that in the not-condisted future, we've really gotta face if we're gonna stay in. First of all, the boiler there is old, undependable, and inefficient, but when we even have air quality issues, I was pushing to look into replacing it. If we just replaced the boiler with another steam boiler, it's not gonna cost that amount, but it's not gonna be efficient, and we're still gonna have a bunch of problems with the old piping systems and so on and so forth. So I really think, you know, that second project that we're gonna stay there or replacing the boiler is something important that we need to think about. And then the list kinda goes on, and then all things play into the long-term decision as to whether we're gonna just clean it up and try to stay there for a short time or utilize that building for a long time. There is some, this lane is suggested in that building that ought to be removed. We oughta be providing some fresh air in that building ventilation. This building doesn't have a fire alarm system. Egress to the building is poor at best. Accessibility is, is an issue. You come into that building at mid-level and can't get to any offices on the building without going up or down a flight of stairs. The way the law is written for reasonable accommodations, we're okay until someone makes a major issue of it. But if one of the employees or someone that wanted to utilize the services for that building really pushed, we could have a big issue with accessibility. There's electrical issues there, plumbing issues, and then the rest of that list is just, you know, once you get to a certain point, you can consider getting or renovating the building. Some of the things that I'm mentioning here, I mentioned already, that the square footage of the building is higher than needed, space is used inefficiently. If we just clean up the old boiler, the basement spaces will continue to affect the dust and soot and issues with safety, egress, accessibility. We really, if, if we go much beyond the boiler, we need to start having someone look at that building from the design, maybe a little architecture and design aspect. I just put three options there. I mean, I, I think if we do the most basic cleaning, that's, it costs us about $12,000. So if you kinda clean things up, put some air filters in there, and do some of the just basic things, go get somebody in there to clean, move the files out, and upgrade the heating system, it'll be about $10,000, and then the price just jumps up from there. I would like to talk about some of the pictures that I've got. If you look at the very first picture, the boiler on the right is our new boiler. The boiler on the left is the old boiler. The original boiler to that building was a coal-fired furnace that was built right into the building. The building on the right is a 16-year-old steam boiler that heated the building now. And if you look at the, the next picture, you can see there's a, there's a half an inch of soot on top of that boiler, and it's just, it doesn't run efficiently, it doesn't burn cleanly, and we're not getting any value at all, and it's not dependable. That next picture just shows, there's piping in that building, that the old gravity ventilation system had steam piping, and there's, there's pipes all over that place that are just something that ought to be dealt with and removed. The next groups of pictures just show you the storage in there. Every, every square foot of that basement is properly, there's storage stuff. You know, it needs to, we need really good shelving, and it needs to be organized and cleaned up and done in a way that figures out with documentation and all this. That next picture, we, we had storage in what used to be the old bathrooms for the school. Those tanks up on the ceiling were from, you know, very, very old toilets, where the toilets were down at the floor, the tanks were way up in the air. When I first came here five years ago, that room, there was three major leaks in that room, and all of the stuff in there was soaked. And just more and more pictures of all of the storage there. The next couple of pictures just kinda show some issues with egress and doors and windows that desperately need some attention. And the last one I kinda put in there on a whim, this talk about safety and egress in that building. I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago in the office, and a hardware on one of those doors failed, and it was a group of six of us that were stuck in that room for 20 minutes to look, somebody tried to hinge it off the door to get us out.
Everybody that could've rescued us was in with us.
I came back over the holiday weekend with a carpenter who happened to have hardware to fix that door, because it's really kinda by you, carpenter, fix that whole door, it doesn't work.
When they took the pins off, it had been painted shut, so they couldn't even whack it. They eventually had a hammer. But I was glad you were there to see that.
What I, what I've provided is just the background. I'm not pushing for any one of these projects or something. I'm trying to answer some of what was, that you asked last week when I was here and give you some background information in the next decision.
So I can say, you know, thank you for doing this research. It feels like to me that we have the accountability as a committee to give you the, our blessing to continue looking for other options. But it also brings up thoughts as we look at these pictures, you know, even our superintendent search. Would we wanna show our new superintendent?
Was that one of the questions? Where she's gonna be living?
Yeah, some stories, and what's, what's happened over the years.
Maybe we should have the meeting later.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, if she doesn't run away.
In the room with the door shut.
Believe it or not, we're an upgrade for our candidates.
Yeah.
This is, this is an upgrade for our candidates.
This is scary.
It's, it's an upgrade for our candidates. Seriously.
I just, I'm not sure, I mean, how long we should debate this. I mean, I really think that's the account, we, we, we need to be accountable to say, go forward if Mike's face, I mean, this, you can throw a lot of good money at bad space.
Bill, Judy?
We both saying, still about, put a dress on a pick, but at the end of the day, it's still a pick.
Sounds like Sarah Taylor.
That's what you got here. You can do anything you want to that. Would you put a, a hundred thousand or more, or two or three hundred, into that building? No. What we need to do is, I know it, I'm not talking about an architect or plans or drawings or anything, but I need, I need a sense of what it would cost to turn this, let's just use this one for example, 3,100 square feet in the white, what it would cost to turn that into usable office space. You know, just, I'd like to know, can you, you know, I know you're not an architect. You mean, you're back in the building? Yeah, in, in Wailey's building.
I can, I can look at it and try to put some numbers.
Just, just to send me in the right direction, so, because I know I don't wanna fix the, I know I don't wanna fix the oven.
Can I ask, can I?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Judy, you're good? Patty? I just want you to know that when they moved into this building, there was a fund, the Central Office Repair Fund. There's currently about $39,000 still sitting in that account that I, I don't know, you guys would have to tell me, Mr. Decker, Mr. Smith, the people who've been here a long time, what are the ramifications of being able to use that money to help us either rehab or move or?
That, can I answer that?
Sure.
I think that money, some of that money was derived from, that we had a five, I think it was a five-step plan, we're gonna do this and this, this, this year, that next year, and that following your septic system, and this, that, and the other thing, in order to get it in shape. I think that's probably where that money accrued over time from those five, five stages.
It did, and remember, this was to go towards the boiler, because we knew at some point we'd have to replace it.
Judy?
So, I'm not gonna disagree about the facility itself and the need to replace it with a livable sort of humane environment for the people that work and staff. And thank you, Bob, for researching what it would talk, what it would take to like set up the cubicles and set up the other infrastructure that the administrative offices need. There's another issue, which is you're gonna be taking all the stuff that's in the basement with you.
Not all of it.
The old, the dust, the paperwork, it all has to be handled, and so what's the, have, I, I remember talking about it before, a few meetings ago, but like, is there some larger plan to address that too? Because it does seem to me like that's something, that's a situation that we wanna put the administrative staff in to go through it. You know, maybe there's like a high level of administrative staff that can say, "Take all those boxes, those can go way too short," but like what, and then how do you avoid this going forward? Because whether you stay in a leased space or you come back into some other permanent space, there has to be a plan, you know, that addresses that bigger storage and data management issue.
A lot of the records would be stored offsite.
To, you wanna make an iron yard or something like that?
Well, in theory, it probably would be a storage trailer.
So that's what the trailer is?
That would be, and I...
Yeah, I think, the numbers I have here, the $5,000 to clean the horizontal surfaces, and then some more money for some people to come in and sort through things, and money for boxes and that sort of thing, would, would get the material that's in the basement, sort it out, throw away the junk, put it into clean boxes.
And don't, don't lose sight of the fact that you own that puppy, okay? So whether you move out or not, you own it.
Right.
So if there are places that you could use, you know, like office space upstairs for storage, that are decent, clean building, because you still own it.
And then going forward, Judy, what I would like to do, I've been, I'm gonna be talking with Scott Paul, our IT director, and going more towards digital records and saving things on hard drives and PDFing and storing, because some of the stuff we do have to keep, like payroll records, even though the IRS is seven years, because we belong to a public retirement system, we have to keep them for much longer in case people wanna buy time back, there's confusion with their records. But we could get that all digitally stored, copied and stored, and then we can get rid of those records. It's just a matter of retraining people who are used to wanting to pull papers out of a folder.
Bob?
Question I have is, this 3,100 square feet, is there a heating system in there? Wired or?
The heat is, is in, in the ceiling along with the lights. I did get quotes that the design company that SCAMS use to put in their offices, they're a modular unit. The wiring and the IT functions and everything are in the walls, so they come and set it up. The costs that they had were five offices for $45,000. So that was for the design and the setup. That's if we went with the same design company that, that they've been using.
But are the suspended ceilings in there now, and air conditioning and heating, so that if you put first-class office space in there, would that already be available or is it?
That, that would be part of it, which is why the partitions go up eight feet, so that you maintain the light and the heat.
Because it's hot, they're high, the ceilings are high.
They're very high.
All right. Well, what I'm just trying to get at is, is the $45,000 a year of building, the number of office suites?
Would be five. Five office suites.
And the area for the rest of the people who?
Because there already exists an incredible conference room with smart boards. There already exists a lovely kitchen. There already exists lovely bathrooms. There already exists common space. So it would be a matter of putting in a hallway so that we'd have a separate entrance, and we would have to get some money for that. And I can work with Bob and Mark Verhensky, the town manager from Waitley, to get some more hard figures for you. I also just need to let you know that what we've done in the meantime, as I am... I also just need to let you know that what we've done in the meantime is I have three people who are working off-site on a daily basis. And it is more comfortable for them and they come in only when need to. However, there are people like myself and bookkeeping and Patty who need to be there because that's where all the stuff is. So I have sent everybody who has had a problem with it, who can go off-site, off-site. So there's really nobody who's down in the basement much at all.
Except when we have to use the bathroom.
Except when we have to use the bathroom.
Phil and Bob?
So I think since we talked about this last, there has been this sort of a seismic change and that's what Marty indicated at the beginning, we're thinking, there is actually cavalry riding to the rescue. And I don't know if you heard that whole thing, there's a public health agency that's coming that's doing testing, you have no cost to us or to our tax, to our local taxpayers that's worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. That includes an, this is all epidemiological. This is science, whether a given indoor air pollution in a given concentration is capable of causing a given disease or health condition. And the state is loaded with all these epidemiologists and people that, if the employees are willing to avail themselves of this thing in the full degree, they come in, they look at health records, maintaining privacy the whole time, and they're able to determine, and it's, the thing is that it's a neutral third party and you can take their, it's the data that you supply us with. And they come in with, they come in with ability to remediation and tap into all sorts of different funds.
They're there to help us, they will be there on the twenty-fifth of this month.
Do they do the same thing with underinflated balls?
What's that?
Do they do the same thing with underinflated balls?
Right, right. I mean, I, I, I met with Bob, we're doing all this stuff and everybody's questions and everything, you know, Deerfield, we're picking on Deerfield, then put a hamper in our ambulance place, maybe we should just talk to Mark and says, Deerfield's put us in a bad spot, you know, let's put them in a bad spot and just, you know, tell them we're going to, we'll start, you know, let's put all our efforts.
Well, my understanding is that the Waitley Select Board has committed to the South County ambulance and wants to see it through until the April twenty-eighth town vote in Deerfield. Because when we had the special town meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was a non-binding referendum. So they told the townspeople through that petition that they wanted to have the ambulance service remain in Deerfield. However, it was not a vote and it won't be voted on until then. So Waitley really feels they need to at least see that process through. I understand that. I think there's a lot we can do in the meantime. I'm really curious to see what the Department of Public Health, they're not, like I said, they're not a regulatory agency, they're not there to shut us down, they're there to help and they're there to provide us with ideas for funding if we needed to stay there for a little longer, you know, categorize things and prioritize what needs to be done without spending a huge amount of money if our goal is to find another space.
But, you know, in the meantime, if we're going to be there, whatever it is, two, three, four months anyway, you know, let's buy some, a couple hundred dollar air quality, we have them in our bedroom because my wife has severe allergies and stuff and it really helps her a lot. Let's buy one for each, your office and Louise's office and Patty's office, let's just go out and buy them, we have thirty-nine thousand dollars, we'll just go out and buy them. We, it does take the crap out of the air, it filters it, and it shuts off when it's, when the filter's clogged. I mean, that's, you know, we have them at home.
So?
I mean, I, these people who go off-site because of the air, so let's try to help clean the air that doesn't cost a lot of money if they're, you know, ours was a hundred and something dollars, it doesn't pay.
When is they going to get back to us? What they doing?
Well, they're coming on the twenty-fifth. I don't have any more details than that. I know they bring people who do air quality testing, they bring people in health to do assessments or interview anyone who would like to. And then they give us a report, they said they'd be happy to come and talk to this committee and give us ideas, but I don't know what, how quick the turnaround time is yet.
So if he makes the put a spot on the approval agenda?
Well?
Thirty-one weeks remain left in Deerfield.
No, no, I'm just, let me find out, let me find out how quickly they can turn around the information.
Is it April at the meeting?
It is, it's my meeting.
Bob, my question is, the page with the doors on it, I did go and take a tour, it does smell terrible, but the door with the exit sign on it, if you stand up there, it's actually a rise and if you stand up there and look back, you're looking at that boiler. So that's really not a viable egress if there's a problem with the boiler. And the other one, it might, it just needs some, just, it needs to be, it's permanently shut right now, right?
Yeah, well, it works, but it's not well.
It has the disease of Marty's office.
I'm never quite sure, if, somebody ought to really, but it's the same kind of thing. I mean, we can send somebody down there to fix it and a week later it may be broke again. A lot of what happened in that building is there were at least two other, maybe three other exits in that building that were just removed. Gripped over or?
Right. So those are out.
There was a fire escape in every, in every classroom.
There was.
Yes.
I know that, yes.
But yeah, I can, I can get back at the doors and have somebody look at them and do some, make sure they work. Did they go upstairs?
The attic?
Yeah. Just like this, this way?
Yeah.
So anyways, that was my concern is that the egress was not there, I mean, the front door, but she probably had. So, you're not looking for a vote?
No, I'm not looking for a vote, I'm just, I guess, looking for support and, and it does sound like you were authorizing us to at least go out and buy some air filter systems.
Do what you have to do. My comment on the air filter, so is I think buying some of the bigger, you know, the, a good, a good quality, solid commercial air filter is going to cost about twelve hundred dollars a piece, they'll do two thousand square feet. So if you put one of those, I mean, if you bought two of them and put them upstairs where people are now, that would do a good job. The other item that I don't quite know whether we really, I think, almost no matter what happens or who says what, getting the basement cleaned once, you know, cleaning the horizontal, that, that five thousand dollar figure for cleaning the basement, no matter what anybody says or what anybody does, we're going to have to do that. And while they're doing that, they'll run a negative air machine in the basement and they can leave it there for a while and that will improve. And you're talking about moving the stuff out of there while they clean it into a trailer that has some type of, I've seen trailers before, get condensation and next thing you know, things in the trailer are molding. So the type of trailer we're going to have to ventilate and so, so it doesn't, at least they get it all out, clean it, maybe paint, do whatever we need to do down there to try to, that costs the least amount of money to try to see if we can put the stuff back. You're talking about put the stuff back in there afterwards, right? Possibly? Well, at first, again, just clean it. Yeah. And? But you have to put the stuff somewhere while you're cleaning, right? I know, I think what they're going to do is they're going to move stuff around just enough to dust, they're not going to open the box, they're going to clean all horizontal surfaces and they're going to clean what mold they can find and they'll probably? If we're going to move these boxes, I mean, it sounds stupid, but if you could paint what's in the box with plastic, some type of plastic bags and you seal them so they're clear so you can still look at them if you had, had to get them, but that way, part of the problem is, is the box is absorbing all this moisture and all the smells and whatever else you want to call it over the time. I mean, I'm just?
I do agree because if we're going to spend money to clean, we can't just move things around. It, there needs to be some kind of?
We need to do, this is, this price is from a remediation contractor. He does a lot of asbestos work, he's very well versed in air quality, he will seal off the basement, he will put it under negative air and he will do the project here very safe. I mean, we got, we do have money. You know, it's not like we don't have money, we have thirty-nine thousand dollars. If a part of that thirty-nine thousand dollars is to clean up, even if it's temporary, I think it's, it's a benefit that the people are working there.
Is that a motion?
I, I got thirty-hundred thousand dollars to spend, I mean, it's, I don't think you have to ask our commission to spend it on air quality systems or cleaning the basement because it's for central office.
I don't know what the money's there for.
If we increase that twelve thousand dollar figure for basic cleaning, we come with the money that we currently have, that will go a long way toward a first step to hold us over until this stage and we have a next meeting and we make some more.
The only issue I have, the only issue I have with that money, Mr. Hala, is that we also had lights donation money, which we tried to use to put a scoreboard in and we got all kinds of, you're not supposed to use the money that way, so I just wanted to know if there's any stipulations on how we're supposed to use this money that exists before we do it and then someone say, you weren't supposed to use the money for that.
Well, the money that's there is money that we saved on bids for different things. So it is money that we saved, you know, to either give the towns back the money that we saved the money or we spend it for the build.
It was saved for money that the towns voted to spend on improvements to the central office.
So that qualifies right there.
That's what it was.
So I don't think we need a vote. Phil?
I would just like to urge everybody not to take a step back through the precipice and not to do this. This is, you're responding to emotion and not data. You have a state agency, the indoor air quality professional health experts in the state coming that can do any or all of this at no cost to us in two weeks, and you're talking about just paying the bill now when it's, it's, we all care about the people working there, they're our found, they're our friends, they're our neighbors, we don't want them to be sickened by their workplace, but we have, the notion that you can do X, Y, or Z and it might affect the health, there's, yeah. You need to respond to science and data on this. They're coming, the data is coming in two weeks along with the ability to pay. For us to just volunteer to pay money is just wack.
Lynn?
I understand that I am the daughter of a woman who was a high school secretary for about a hundred and fifty years. I'm looking at these pictures, we've got two separate problems here the way I see it. One, the building's falling apart and thank you very much for this, that's cool. Two, apparently we have a filing system put together by somebody who went to Horner's University. What is this? Who files like this? We have three-ring binders on top of filing cabinets that aren't labeled, that are falling over, we've got open boxes of papers, who does this? It doesn't matter who you bring in, if we've got this mess because no one's bothering to do it, they just throw it down in the basement and shut the door and hope elves take care of it, nothing's going to get better. Somebody who has any kind of sense of organization has got to be down there for forty-eight hours to throw half this crap out. I understand that we need to keep stuff for a considerable length of time, but we don't need to keep it and three-ring binders on top of filing cabinets, this is ridiculous. We've got to get our poo in a group here.
We agree, we agree, and we did, we had, no. We had a trailer last year, we got rid of more stuff. I am very concerned when I have people, and I'm talking secretaries, who volunteered to go down there, they're going down there with rubber gloves and masks.
It's nasty.
It is very nasty.
How many that has mask suits go down?
So, and it's really not their job. This has been accumulated for decades and?
But whose job is it then?
Well, it's our job.
And we don't need to hold on to stuff for decades.
No, but you do need somebody who can understand what is actually there to determine what legally we have to keep?
Agreed.
And what legally we don't have to keep.
Who is it and how can we get that person in the basement?
So maybe that's where we spend our?
I don't know who that person is.
I will go in the basement and pull through.
But maybe that's where we spend our money.
And let me tell you, the people that we sent in?
Nothing is going to get solved if we don't take care of this issue.
Lynn, the people we sent into the basement came out of the basement with rashes.
That's what I said, it's really not their job.
But someone's got to go down there and take care of this or this problem is going to continue forever and it's not right that we're having a new superintendent come in to?
What about your old superintendent? I signed the contract before I went into the basement.
Well, that's, that's good to know. Keep your listen.
Who shows the superintendent some pictures and goes, hey, come work here because this is awesome. Hard no often.
But Phil, did you say?
Keith, wait, Keith, please, sorry. Let's keep it orderly.
Who are we going to get to take care of this problem? Who is the person in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts who does this for a living? And how do we get that person in the basement as soon as possible?
That is a very good question and I don't know the answer to that. We've been doing it on our own for the last two, three years.
With the, with the, with the Attorney General's guidelines about what we can and cannot talk.
How about you go down there with a hand scanner? Scan it all. And I realize it would take about a hundred years to do that, but it's got to start somewhere because this is filing from hell.
Yes, I agree. I don't think any of us understood how bad it was until just recently.
But we kind of giggle and go, huh, yeah, it's a real mess. Who's going to take care of it? Because this health issue, people are getting sick and they're getting sick because of this. So let's take care of this and then we can take care of that collectively. Who's the person and how do we, who do we contact to find out who the person is who needs to be in the basement? What hazmat person do we need to contact for this? Who do we, who do we call?
Keith?
I think maybe Phil was talking about to give us some idea of the direction where we could call, but when was the last time documents have been stored down there? Where have we been storing the most recent documents? Like what's our cutoff point from that stuff that's down there?
We did that. We, last year Marty and I went down and we said, anything in this area, POs, seven years, everything else. We had a shredding company come and they took out tons of boxes. I think the problem occurred, Lynn, when they moved to that building from wherever they were, they just threw everything in there with the intention of, we'll get to it. And now, no one ever got to it. So we did already get rid of everything we could have that was older than seven years, it's gone.
Then why are these three-ring binders on filing cabinets?
Because apparently we need those.
In a box, in a plastic box.
No, those probably, those, those specific binders could probably be thrown out. Okay? And I have to tell you, you know, in defense of everybody in that building, they have thrown out unbelievable amounts of stuff to get it to look as good as it does now.
And I totally believe that. More work is required as soon as possible so you can get in there and do the work that you need to do.
I didn't hear your answer to Keith's question though. Keith's question was, are you still going down there to store documents actively or?
Yes, on a daily basis, all our special ed records are there.
All our two thousand fifteen, just when, actually our two thousand thirteen went down and our fourteen and fifteen and sixteen remain upstairs.
So aren't those already in the computer?
No.
No?
Not scanned.
That, that, part of the problem is that we are not using our system as best we can. These people like paper, I'm trying to get them off the paper.
Cut them off the paper.
Could I make a suggestion that we have a group coming in very soon, but we also have some alternatives that we can make that maybe could start pricing things out and putting, I don't know, we have to put bids out so that if, the suggestion is that we should take some of these steps, we can do them immediately and then that group could maybe give us an idea of where we need to go and do the?
And I'm sure they, I think that's a great idea because they do this all the time. They've just been recently out in Buckland, they were in Montague, they are in old crummy buildings, town buildings and schools all the time. So they know, that's why.
So that's who we call?
That's who we call. This is the Director for the State of Public Health, I mean, he's a big way of air quality. And he?
Find out what we need to do.
He is coming, so he can direct us because you can't willy-nilly throw stuff out.
Agreed. When is he coming?
The twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth?
Two weeks.
Come on.
Of this month.
Excellent.
Okay.
And then those, that stuff can get filed.
And then that's, he can tell us.
When people come back with their retired records, they know where it is.
Yeah, he can tell us, who does that stuff?
Okay, in the, our time is getting away from us, so I think we should leave this with that suggestion as I watch her write that down.
Yes, I'm going to.
And again, thank you, Bob, and I think we?
And again, thank you, Bob, and I think we need to move on, but I noticed our student council...
Mostly here for a student representative.
...person is here, so we don't have to make a motion. I just have to insert her. So if there is Caitlin. Caitlin Burnett. Well, Miss Caitlin.
Hi. All right, so most recently, since the last time we talked to you, we're kind of in between doing things. What we're planning, eventually, we're hoping to do another field day in, or at the end of the year, but that's still sort of in the preliminary, like, do we want to do this? When do we want to do it? So right now, we've really just been sitting down and talking about what the student body as a whole is concerned with. So questions that we've been asked as student council, or things that we've heard from students who might not, or who might be discontented with certain things, and so talking about how we might present those to administration, what we can do, what we can't do, and so really just kind of listening to what students are saying, and how we can present those ideas and potentially make changes.
Anybody got any questions? Field day?
Field day.
What was it last year? What were you... Are you aiming to keep it the same, or change it? Was it good? Was it... I don't recall.
I think we liked how it went last year. Usually, we've had this very strict itinerary of things that we do, and last year, we decided to go with something a little more free-form, so we weren't requiring that people participate in certain things. We just laid out different activities. We had kids go up and play music, and just give the students like an hour to be outside at the end of the year, socialize, play games if they wanted, and that seemed to work fairly well, and I think we had fairly positive feedback.
Is that a full day, half-day? Is it done? How close to the end of the year is that done?
I want... I think it was actually after the seniors had graduated, and it was just an hour at the end of the day.
All right, okay. Really, field day and hours? Come on, guys. Field hour?
It's field hour.
I think you push for at least a half a day with multiple things to do.
All right.
So just a suggestion, but an hour? They should be ashamed of themselves. It'd be like Greece.
A Renday, too.
I like it.
Yeah. Thank you, Caitlin. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Thanks. I'm gonna go plan the telephones.
Budget plan. Do you have them passed out? Do you want to introduce us, and then we pick out?
The proposed 2017 draft budget is coming around before... Patty will do her magic, explaining it all to you in terms that everybody can understand, and then I'll tell you a little bit after that about where we are as a budget subcommittee, where we are with the timeline, where we are with the entire process once she goes through her presentation.
All right. I was just gonna wait for everyone to get a document before I started. Does everybody have a document? Stephanie, did you get one? Okay, so what we have here, I'm gonna start with a narrative. So our budget for FY17 is in the amount of $10,394,157. This is an increase in our operating budget from fiscal year 16 of 6.63%. The overall increase to the towns of Frontier Regional School District is 5.84%. The difference is due to a zero increase in regional transportation and the elimination of the debt assessment since the note is paid in full this year. This budget does not contain any new initiatives to the academic or technological programming at Frontier, but due to increasing needs of our student population, there is a request to increase our psych services by a .4 FTE. The estimated cost for this is $30,810, and will enable the district to provide the services required. Some of the other changes that are affecting our budget is that we do not have a collective bargaining agreement at this time, but we have $55,036 in step increases. We also need to increase our retirement payouts by $102,040. In fiscal year 16, we have eight retirements to pay: three teachers, one guidance counselor, one psychologist, one instructional assistant, one secretary, as well as the superintendent. We must also fund three retirement payouts from fiscal year 15. The retirees had not given us notice and time to get their payouts last year. All of the retiring staff, with the exception of the instructional assistant, will be filled. There's an estimated savings of $63,237 in this budget for hiring savings. One of the biggest challenges this year in this budget is the fact that, for the first time, our charter and choice sending tuition exceeds our receiving revenue. This adds money to our operating budget in two ways. The excess tuition in the amount of $69,788 must be provided for through our operating budget and assessed to the towns, and also, the staffing positions, which were funded by the school choice revenues, need also to be charged to our operating budget in the amount of $126,934. There is a schedule on page four for your review to assist you in understanding this issue, and we will review that. One of our other funds, the non-resident tuition revolving account, has also been carrying staff costs in the amount of $38,496, which need to be brought into our operating budget due to a decrease in tuition revenues. Now, I do want to make clear that even though we are losing one student, these salaries were being funded through the non-resident tuition, but they weren't working in those programs. It was just a money source. So now, in order to right-size the staff with the students, we have to take these excess salaries off. The largest increase to our budget is going to be the cost of our health insurance. The projected increase in insurance premiums is 6.8%. Now, let me just say, this is only the second time in five years that we have experienced increases in our health insurance, and the total increase over the five years is still under 10%. So this cost, combined with an estimate for unnegotiated salary increases for both in union and non-union, and the associated increases in payroll tax, adds $276,749 to our budget. The assessment for the Franklin County retirement system has also increased by $15,354. Our sped tuitions have a small increase of $2,957, and we are going to decrease our legal fees in the amount of $8,500. At this time, we don't normally, when we are looking at our budgets, look at the assessments and how they affect the towns, but we felt that because of the increase, that it was important that you see them. So that will... Those will look at the assessment data on pages 17 and 18. So page three of 19 is basically what I just went over about the changes to the collective bargaining agreements, the retirements, the increase in psych services, and as you can see, the net change to our budget is an increase of Okay, so now, if we look at page four of 19, I want to explain a little bit about what is happening. We always have netted our school choice receiving funds and our charter reimbursement against our charter sending and choice sending tuitions, and when we've done that, we've always had excess money. Not a lot, but excess. This year, with the governor's reimbursement being only $51,504, which is a decrease of $100,000 from this year, and the fact that we are paying $676,248 out for 36 students, leaves us upside down for the first time in this account in the amount of $69,788.
Marty, did you want to hand out your...
Yeah. What I want to hand out, the first sheet. It's two-page stapled, so that you can get a sense. This is the outgoing students from our district, and I'll wait until you have it. It's a lot of information, but we can walk you through it.
This is fascinating information. Take it to honest to God. Take the time to look at this. Look at Four Rivers Charter School, look at some of the other charter schools, and look at the cap that Mr. Governor Baker is wanting to lift on charter schools, and look at the impact that charter schools have on us.
So let me explain. The reason, when a student leaves our district to go to a charter school, currently, what's supposed to happen is that, for the first year that that child is out in another school, we're supposed to get a reimbursement of 100% for that cost, and then 25% for the next five years. What's happened is, very similar to our lack of reimbursement for regional transportation. If the revenues aren't there on the state level, we're not getting the money. So the governor has proposed a different reimbursement strategy, and it's based over a three-year period rather than the current five-year, and he's wanting to make this more appealing, because he really wants to lift the cap on charter schools, because it is such a political pressure for the urban schools, because they have a waiting list in large cities in Massachusetts to get into the charter schools.
They need the numbers. They don't have waiting lists. That's what that order of the General's report says. It's scanned. There's no waiting list.
So if you look at these two pages, and if you look at the dollar amounts on the first page, this is Frontier Regional and Union 38, sending school choice and charter students, and you look at the left-hand column, it's the towns or the school, and then across the top, you have the individual schools, and then you look at the bottom, and you look at the totals, that it is costing each one of those towns to send a student to those districts, and the cost is astronomical. We had asked a question to the state, how do we assess the towns for this? Because some towns frankly send more of their students to charter schools than others, and the towns, the state said, you have to go by the regional agreement, which doesn't seem terribly fair, but that's what you have. So of course, the towns that send very few students are gonna want to change the regional agreement. The towns that send a lot of students are gonna be just happy with what they have. So it's... We still have over 300 students deciding to come into our school district, and about 100, a little more than 100 going out. The way the revenue stream goes with it, we are still losing dollars, and that's the frustration. The other thing, when we look deeper, because we have 23 students, and I just choose Halffield, because it's the largest receiving school for all of our students in the district, most of the kids that went or going to Smith Academy on the secondary level never came to Frontier. They either exited our district out of sixth grade, or they lived in our district and were never enrolled, or they were homeschooled and enrolled in another school. Because, you know, frankly, we were asking ourselves, if children are choosing another district, why are they choosing? Let's find out, and if there's a way to correct that. But if we're not getting them to begin with, that is more of a difficulty. So spend some time with this. I'm gonna pass out another sheet, because to be fair, is the revenue that is received for Frontier Regional and Union 38, and it bears out the facts that Patty was talking about. So this is that year, for those of you who have been on the committee for a while, remember that Don Scott said was coming, that there would come a point where the revenues, where the outcome, outgo exceeded the revenue coming in, and this is the point that we got. Bob, you had a question?
There was a meeting that was orchestrated by Teachers Association, MTA,
Yep.
and Amherst last Friday afternoon, I attended the term.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know Trevor went to that as well.
They are looking to gain an awful lot of political thing by putting emphasis on Senator Rosenberg and the legislature and Black, who's about the fact that the funding is insufficient, and there was a superintendent there, and he doesn't typically go to MTA, but he was there, and some of the people that used to serve on the collaborative board were there also, and when I left, I thought there was actually gonna be some grassroots people bringing Senator Rosenberg's home over the weekend. They were talking about calling from there. They were really down.
Right. I know that there's a lot of... Bill Deal is representing in our Superintendent Association for us, and there have been, you know, a lot of letters written to the editors, a lot of people have gone. I don't know how much political clout we have in Western Mass compared to the pressure that's being put on in Boston, but that doesn't mean that we should stop, so.
The charter school lobby spent more than all of the lobbyists last year, about $200,000 in New York City.
I know.
These groups are great, and thank you. The thing that I just wanted to alert early to, like, this is just for town meeting, for us to bring this stuff up, and if we don't bring it up, nobody is gonna, and it needs to be talked about, but to be careful in how you bring this stuff up. This is like kryptonite, because, and I'll just refer to last night's Conway County meeting, we had Sue Segal stood up, I mean, it's on TV, Sue Segal stood up and gave, you know, a nice diatribe against charter schools, and I love you a good diatribe, but the thing about it is that parents can take that really personal. The individual parent that makes an individual decision to send their kid to a charter school really doesn't like being blamed for the woes that the charter schools inflict on public schools.
And I have never been opposed to charter schools, but I'm opposed to the funding formula.
And so that's like the important thing to tease out, that yes, you know, like, we support you as a parent, making your own individual choice, but our cumulative choices have a cumulative impact, and here it is, and, you know, whatever. So that can be really tricky. There was a parent that approached me afterward last night, really upset, that this is not their fault, and why are we demonizing them?
So a couple of things that we've been doing about the charter tuition that we are charged is that it's, in part, it's based on our own per pupil spending, total per pupil spending, which includes grant funding, and upon my arrival here, it came to my attention that on the end-of-the-year report, which is what is used to set these charter rates, Frontier Regional was getting the full brunt of all the grants that support all five schools. So over a half a million dollars in sped grants, Title I grants, early childhood grants, were being reported on the Frontier per pupil. So that was corrected in FY15. So hopefully, when we see our next round of charter, it will come down a bit. Can't make any promises, but just so you know, from a financial perspective, we are doing what we can to try and get those rates down. Yes, Mr. McFarlane?
I was under the impression that it was the per pupil average followed the student. So what accounts for the difference between choice and char?
It's two different programs. School choice is that a parent decides to attend a public school not in the town where they live. If they do that, their town pays the receiving town $5,000, and if that child has special needs, they also pay a sped increment. And if that child has special needs, they also pay a sped increment. If a parent chooses a charter school, the charter school tuitions are based on a formula of the sending towns' per pupil expenditure plus something else, plus a facility speed.
Those are the charters of per pupil spending.
Right, not the choice.
Choices five dollars.
Right. And the choice is something that we will never see changed because it's not something that affects the eastern part of the state. So we do not have any legislative power to get that changed.
One thing we could probably do, I don't know if we passed all four towns, but we could certainly bring it up, is to amend our district agreement where the school choice and the school charter kids get included in the formula. Presently, I don't think the choice, the choice kids may get included, but the charter kids don't as far as I know, or is it going back?
And what are the inner?
Would they do the October one formula as to how we do the cost so that when you do your assessments for this year's budget, it's based upon the October one enrollment?
Right, I take out the choice kids. The school choice kids in are in our foundation budget, but I don't, I take them out because they don't apply to your enrollment.
To our, because they would never enroll at Frontier.
No, they're school choice kids.
They don't?
Just choice, not charter?
I remove school choice in because they don't belong to a town.
Or you take the school choice in.
In, out.
But when we do the formula to assess the individual towns, the kids that are going out charter of choice from various towns, we're not getting paid for them to begin with, other than some state funding.
Correct. Because I think we've visited this before.
We talked about it about five years ago.
We talk about it every year. What I believe the regional agreement language says is native students in the schools. So those would not be in the schools.
Yeah, and that's what we need to change to get that language perfected.
If you ask me, this entire regional agreement needs to be redone because it's antiquated and does not serve any purposes.
I agree with you. I think we ought to go K-12 and get the whole mess straightened out. But I don't think it's going to happen in my life.
Nope.
I would recommend you all think about K-6, though. I really do.
Well, I agree with you. But Stanley Rosenberg told us in that room over there one night that they wouldn't approve that five years ago when he came to visit us. Steve Cooley was with us, and he said that they would not approve of K-6.
I remember, I was there.
And I can assure you that Tom Conway is not going to approve it. That's what we were told last night.
I know.
So, anyway.
But we could propose to amend the agreement to do that little advantage.
So going back to the budget, below the numbers for income, revenue and expenses, I'm showing you how the fund has worked. So if you look at the FY sixteen, we started the year with forty-eight thousand two forty. If we add that to the forty-eight nine twenty-nine above, which was the net income, we had available for expenditure ninety-seven thousand one sixty-nine. However, when we budgeted the salaries last year, we had been hoping to get more money. And so we have budgeted there, a hundred and fifty-five thousand eighty-five dollars were the salaries. So we will have a shortfall of fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Now, we do have money in our Circuit Breaker Fund that can cover that, so that is not an issue. But when we move over to the seventeen column, that's the issue because right now, that's the sixty-nine seven eighty-eight, which is the excess tuition. But we also have salaries of the one twenty-six nine thirty-four. Now, let me just say, I can only work with the numbers I have, which DESI updates in December. Come June, when we do our final accounting, our school choice numbers could go up because if any of our new students have sped increments, they're not reported in the December. The only December sped increments are kids who were with us the year before. So the numbers could go up, but I can only work with what I have right now. So after that, you have the detailed budget on pages five of nineteen through pages sixteen of nineteen. So let's look at page seventeen of nineteen. And this is how this proposed budget would affect our towns. Looking at the bottom afterward says combined assessment. With this budget proposal, Conway's assessment would go up a hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars, or ten point two-two percent. Deerfield would go up three hundred and sixty thousand three twenty-seven, or ten point seven-two percent. Sunderland would go up sixty-four thousand eight eighty-two, or three point seven-three percent. And Waitley would go up twenty-eight thousand one ninety-eight, or three point oh-three percent. Page eighteen of nineteen is the five-year rolling calculation. So as you can see, Conway would increase because they dropped off seventy-five kids and added eighty-two. Deerfield, although they remained unchanged, they dropped two forty-nine and brought in two forty-nine. However, Sunderland went down from, dropped one forty-five and only brought in one seventeen. Waitley drops ninety-two and brings in sixty. So that percentage change gets shifted over to Deerfield and Conway. And then the last page, page nineteen, is just all the differences in the percentages. So if you look at the fourth block, that is the assessment. So you've got Conway going from fourteen forty-three to fifteen oh-one, Deerfield from forty-seven twenty-four to forty-eight twenty-three, Sunderland from twenty-four seventy-five to twenty-four sixteen, and Waitley from thirteen fifty-eight down to twelve point six.
So you want to jump in now, or?
We have. We have had, ooh, is it great? I have sessions of work on the budget, and it seems to change complexion every time we look at it. It sort of changed a little bit from this, from last time to this time. We intend to look at it again as a budget subcommittee because we're not under any constraints of the timetable according to the regional agreement yet, until March. So we will, I believe, in March, we have to have our public hearing. We'll have to vote a tentative budget figure at that one time. But as a subcommittee at this point, if I could speak for the other three members, I don't think they feel comfortable yet. The initiatives have some suggestions and some ways to reduce the six point six-two to a much lower number. And we were just briefed on some of those tonight. I believe, Marty and Patty, you're going to go through those with you, but we just got them tonight too. So we haven't had thoughtful discourse as a subcommittee, and we have time to digest them. So you're going to hear the same right now, the things that we know. And we're going to be, again, and in March, we'll be able to hopefully give you some sort of recommendation on where we want to go with it, but we're not there yet.
So before Patty jumps in, just historically remind you that last year, we had cut a number of possessions. None of those people have been rehired. It was our goal not to decimate the programs that we currently have in place. And so there were limited areas that we could really look at for decreasing this budget, knowing that this would not be palpable for the towns. If you're looking at ten and almost eleven percent increases, you know, this would be hard to swallow. However, we thought it was important to take you through this whole process and for you to see all of the details and to get some of your impressions and bring you a couple of ideas of what we're thinking of for reducing this budget.
Can I just ask a question? What's our numbers for next year with kids coming up from elementary and senior class? Are our numbers staying about the same?
Yeah, we're pretty, I don't think we're going to jump for another two years.
Yeah, next year's class is, the size coming in is one thirty-two, which we lose, we lose about twenty students in the transition year.
Yeah.
That's about what we lose. Between fifteen and twenty is if you go to private charter. Not really choice at that point.
No.
Usually choice of that.
But our population in the district is pretty steady. It's slight decreases in four of the schools. Sunderland is the only one that we have seen any growth in. But it's not dramatic. I'm talking three, four, five, six kids per year, so.
Okay. All right, so a couple of the things that we haven't talked about is that in this budget, we talked about nothing, no program changes, nothing adding technology. But we do have an issue with our technology. And that issue is that we need a new student information system. The one that we have is very difficult. It does not talk to our cafeteria system. It does not talk to our library system. And according to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it's not compliant with their requirements where, from beginning, I think, next year, we stopped sending DESI information and DESI's coming in and taking information. So our vendor says they are compliant, DESI says they're not. Anyways, we started a focus group, and we need about fifty thousand dollars to get a new student information system. The other thing that we did not have in this year's budget was Mrs. Barrett's retirement. And even though her buyout for her sick time is small, she has accumulated sick days which need to be paid out this year. So that would be about twenty thousand dollars, so that's seventy thousand. If we took the one-time costs of our retirements, and even though the increase is a hundred and two, the actual cost is a hundred and eighty-six, one eighty-five, four ninety. If we were to make the request to get that money from our free cash, it would leave us two hundred and seven thousand five hundred and three dollars in our free cash, and it would bring our budget down to three point seven percent if we take the retirement and then we go back and find another hundred thousand dollars to cut.
Knowing that our goal is not to eliminate staff, there may be some savings through attrition, acutely aware of the demoralizing factor that cutting teaching positions add on this building last year as well as in Deerfield Elementary. So that would be our goal, is to maintain staffing positions.
Question. You've gone through this expenditure report in great detail. Is there any way you can squeeze the twenty thousand that we need to pay Marty out of this current year's budget?
No, not with the, not with the way that the, out of district tuition's going. I don't know where we would find it.
And we don't have it in any of the revolving?
I just told you, our revolving account's here in the negative. And just let me say that the reason we are proposing that the superintendent retirement, it's not a retirement. It's money she's already earned. I don't want to say it's a retirement buyout. It's money that she's owed for her vacation days for which she's earned. And the towns already gave us.
The other question is, you say that our vendor says our system is fine, but the state is demanding a better system?
The state put out a compliant list.
Okay, now, is that an unfunded mandate?
It's always been an unfunded.
And the state auditor will turn around and defend us on?
No, because we've been required to have this for about fifteen, twenty years now.
No, this particular software they want to have.
No, they don't, there's no particular software they want us to buy. They have to be compliant. So all the vendors went out, changed their software to become compliant, and now they're just on a compliant list.
So that's just a list of compliant.
It's a list. Is it not getting penalized for this, right?
No.
We will be, we will hold audit and auditing. Right. If the state tries to come and take our data and they can't get it, they will not be happy.
Well, that's a simple, but.
No, it's not. It's our problem because if they can't get our information, they can't do our foundation enrollment, which is where we get our money.
We have to be able to upload everything at the end of the year into the state database, which decides everything that we do. If we can't do that. I agree with both of you. I don't like it, but.
Mr. Modesto?
And I do see our database system doesn't work efficiently. So, you know, whether or not the state, you know, personally put it on the list, we, you know, collectively, administratively, we want to move away from the system. Right now, we have to hand-load, whenever I do grades, I got to shut down one thing. I mean, it is a complete, it's a complete mess because it doesn't talk well with other programs. So we have a nursing program with a data system that doesn't talk to it well. We have a cafeteria system with all, you know, if we do lunch and all the other stuff, it doesn't talk to it. We have a special ed system, it doesn't talk to it well. Then we have the grading system, you go to the headline grading system, it doesn't talk to it well. We have to continue upload. Anytime class, someone drops a class, adds a class, it all has to be done kind of manually, going in to drop. The cloud service is terrible, which we are now. And so we've been looking at trying to leave this for a while, and now it's kind of been, the perfect storm came. Like, now the state is even saying this isn't meeting up to par. So it's one of those things that, I just want to say, there's a lot more to it than just it ending up on a list. It's been a frustrating system. They have not kept up, in my opinion, with the, in the opinion of the search committee, the search committee, what do we call it? Research committee that we have together. They haven't kept up with the updates. And then the updates that they are proposing to us, now they want us to pay more. And in the long run, the system, not the long run, the following year, the system that we're going to is actually, I believe, nine thousand dollars less a year in the current system we're in now that we don't like. So it's a transition.
Let me just correct you. We're not going to any system. We're doing an RFP, and we are interviewing several companies.
Correct.
But the way that these new companies bill us is on a per-student charge rather than a fixed fee every year for modules that don't work. So it's an initial, it's an initial cash outlay for the information, the training, the implementation, but after that, it's a savings.
Yeah, Patty, the torture grammar department's checking in over here. The report says no new initiatives. And then now we're talking about a new student information service, which I think qualifies as a new initiative.
It's not a new, it's not a new academic initiative. It's a techno, it's a technology.
That's, that's.
Plus, it's all five, it's all five schools. It's not just Frontier.
The costs you've got to hear are what Frontier's going to pay.
Right.
And the other towns are going to pay anything individually?
No, because their money's sitting in our free cash.
With the permission of the group, I'd like to let Stephanie, who has her hand raised. If anybody has it, go, Steph.
Thank you. And just another comment about the current system we have. We could not see our second semester class load before the second semester started unless Darius shut down for a semester and won.
Call the company, that's how it works. You don't want you to have a semester at the same time. But those are the little things.
So those two suggestions that Patty mentioned, as she said, would bring down our budget to three point oh-seven. I don't know if you still have the figures how it would affect the assessments.
Yes, I do. So if we were to do that, then Conway's assessment would only increase six point three-five percent, or seventy thousand four oh-one. Deerfield would be six point six-two percent increase, or two hundred twenty-two, six thirty-five. Sunderland's goes down four thousand ninety-three dollars, and Waitley's goes down seven thousand seven, seventy-four, which is probably a lot more palatable to go to town meetings with and try to sell than a six point six-three percent increase.
So we were looking for direction from the committee. If this is how you wanted us to put together some more firm facts for another meeting.
Do we have any money available at the end of the year to fund our OPEP?
Our OPEP, our OPEP obligation is seven million dollars, and last year, I think you gave us a hundred thousand, so.
We're not even going to have that available.
Well, you got two oh-five, so you could give another hundred.
Yeah, but that doesn't make us much cushion while we're waiting for the door, yeah.
But it's raining now.
Well, we still don't know what the contracts are going to negotiate for.
Right.
So that's still out there. We haven't gotten through the entire winter yet, obviously. We haven't gotten through the entire winter yet, obviously. So there may be some additional savings there. So I think it's too early to tell if we're going to have enough money at the end of the year for that. I share your concern.
When do we have to have our public meeting?
Feb, March 8th is our public hearing.
I must say.
I also need to look at the history of free cash. I think this is the most we've had in free cash in recent time, I think. And the increase that we've had in that account over the last couple of years, I think we, I think when I started as principal three years ago, it was around 200. I'm, I'm looking at Patty, if she remembers it, remembers it, or we can look at it. But it's not like we've been saving for, but it's not like we've been saving for 20 years to get to this point. I think with the last few years, we have been very conservative here, and, and it's, it showed off in the area.
I think the lowest it's been since I've been here was like 119,000.
And I think over my 15 years in Frontier and this role, 100,000 was always our cutoff point. But we usually had between 100 and 150.
The point Emily, it's not like we spent 20 years to do this and then we're going to blow it all in one year.
Right.
In the last few years, we've been very conservative fiscally here on this mid-number system.
50, 60, 70,000 from E and D and applied it to reduce the assessments. To have the money that's available in there now, to be able to take these rather large expenses and not put them in the budget, you could have put them, put them in the budget and then reduce the budget by the entire block of money, but then you falsely inflate the budget because they're not regarding expenses. They're not coming back again.
Right.
The retirements, you're paying them, they're done. You buy the, you spend the 50,000 and you're done. Marty goes and she's gone. That's the end of it.
Yeah. Can I just also say that the, the, the retirement payout needs to be appro, taken from free cash and appropriated to our FY16 budget. And we can do the same thing with the retirements that even though they aren't payable till July 1st of 2016, we could appropriate, we could accrue and appropriate them and add to our budget this year. That's legal to do. And then the 50,000, as soon as that's appropriated, we can put our RFP out on the street. So I know some of this can wait, but other things can't wait because if we're going to do that, I need to amend the budget with the state and have that accepted.
But that was what I asked earlier, could we pay for some of these this year? You haven't spent an awful lot of money on a few of them yet.
If you take the money out of free cash and appropriate it to the FY16 budget.
Yeah.
Then we can get moving on some of these things. And anything that we don't use, Bob, will go back into free cash at the end of FY16.
Judy?
My question actually is about the teacher contract negotiations that haven't started yet, and what do we bump up against? Because if you're talking about having a March 8 public hearing, you're still dealing with tentative numbers. We haven't even had one meeting yet about the duty and stuff.
Well, we'll have one. March 3rd is our first one, but, yeah. But I do hope to have the elementary contracts settled by then. We have been in negotiations with elementary since October.
Here we went and we're going to trouble with the timeline of the regional agreement, you know, right up against negotiations. Certainly, certainly benchmark places that dates that have to be reached during the regional agreement and negotiations down the standing.
Right.
They still have to move forward or you mean violation of the regional agreement, which is nobody adheres to a license. Right, Robert?
Nobody likes the whole.
Okay. So we don't have to bump.
Okay. Anybody got any other questions or comments?
I would like to see, come up with some plan to, to take care of the portion of the cost of the school choice and the school charter, if you can, to portion those costs of four towns, you know, just like the regular students get portioned up and, you know, come up with the language, you know, the October 1 formula and change.
You want me to change the regional agreement?
I want to propose that with the board vote, a change, not tonight, but the draft and propose a change so we can bring it into the 21st century. Because of the fact that that was written in 1957, there was no choice and there was no charter.
So Mr. Dicker, I, I agree with that, but I think at this point, and not something I want to put on this superintendent's plate, but I think when we get our new superintendent, that we need to put a regional agreement committee together to look at the entire document because it does not address capital. It needs to start addressing OPEB and how we're going to allocate that. And I think if we're going to go through the headaches of trying to get one chart, one regional agreement change, we might as well focus our efforts and after we're done with our policies, then have a committee to look at the entire regional agreement.
But just if you can, if you can do part of it, you should do part of it. That's fine. We don't have to do it tonight, but I'm just saying that.
It's a four out of four town vote.
Yeah. You guys, you guys aren't going to vote for it?
I'm going to take a vote. Deerfield, Deerfield and Conway will not vote for it. Sunderland and, and Whateley will.
Okay, moving along. Superintendent?
Yes, there was an error. This is under discussion items in the transportation budget vote last year. It was clerical error, so we need to correct that. It was brought to our attention by our auditors.
My question, was there a write figure voted at the town meeting?
What town meeting vote?
All the four towns.
Yes, because they're, they took their vote before. This was your meeting, Tuesday, May 12th, and I have the meeting right here, and it was in response to the vote, vote, to, to the votes that the towns took. And Judy Pierce.
I read the message.
Oh, I'm sorry. The committee discussed the results of the town meetings in regard to the budget. Judy Pe, actually, it's Judy Peace. Judy Peace moved to adopt a final operating budget. I'm throwing everyone now, Bill. Of 9747730, transportation budget of 103349. The 103349 would have been the net number after the regional transportation, but we need to vote the gross number because that's what we're expending. So the number should be 288.
106.
106.
Oh.
Second. Any discussion?
I think you guys should let me vote it. I don't know.
Any discussion? I think we should, you know, check the spelling of your name.
But here we're along. Billy's second.
I know. All those in favor?
Yes.
All righty.
Auditor burned his first salary on that one. Good catch.
I tried to make him say it was just a typo, but they wouldn't go for it.
Well, I'm sure Judy took the figure somebody gave it or whatever.
I wasn't here, so they weren't accepting it.
It's his fault. I went looking to see if I could pull it up on TV and see what happened, but I wasn't able to.
So we got one more.
Yeah, one more vote to transfer the FY15 excess regional transportation, the amount of $46,624 to the regional transportation revolving fund.
How is this extra money?
Yes. So back in September, we had established the regional transportation revolving account, and it, I misunderstood. I thought once we took the legislation, the money just goes in there and stays in there. But according to DESI, each year, we have to vote the excess of, and we didn't do that. So we have to take the vote to put the excess of 46,624.
So, second.
Discussion? Hello? All those in favor?
Hi.
Most. Motion passes. Thank you.
Without a dissent.
Okay, reports. Anything from the collaborative?
Yeah. Just wish I wasn't here the last time. I was supposed to give a report and decided to write it all down because there's a whole lot of end of the year kind of summary stuff that we've been going through at the collaborative. So I kind of get the highlights for you all because there's just a lot of information. Just a lot of great stuff going on and lots of varied stuff, as I say. The bottom page is the letter, they've also been working really hard, the collaborative paths. And nice to throw things. Working with the superintendents, working with members of collaborative, neighboring towns, talking about school choice and charter schools. And the superintendents drafted a letter. I didn't include all the names on it because I was going to take another sheet of paper. So, sorry, your name's.
Okay, I signed.
But it's this letter that they wrote to open discussion about charter schools. So I included that for you. I thought it was particularly well. Lots of good stuff. And anytime you want more information, I've got a lot of it here.
Sounds like you have fun.
It's been really good. It really has. The last meeting that I went to, there was a superintendent dinner first, and so listening to other superintendents. And I think just, because I teach in Westfield and I'm on the school committee here, I'm seeing the same problems everywhere. And when I was talking to different superintendents, I'm like, well, how about this? Well, yeah, about this. And then other people are like, yeah, we're having the same problem here, we're having the same problem here, and there's concerns here, here, and here. And the same issues going on with us. So I, I guess I feel a little better at the end of the day that we're not in it by ourselves.
Please relax.
We're all the same.
Thanks for doing this.
For a particular, for the incoming superintendent, they praise the collaborative superintendent and praise the collaborative for their superintendent mentoring program. So maybe something for the new superintendent to take advantage of later if he wishes to. Thank you.
Principal?
Honestly, the, the majority of my last few weeks has been superintendent surge in budget, so, but I just threw in a few small things that are happening in the school. I did a coffee conversation with the principal last week in an effort to make sure that, as I explained to the parents that were there, to really understand the programs at Frontier, if they're making thoughts about leaving. And it was that kind of blunt about it, and also to learn more about the school while it's open. And, I mean, it was just an, I was charged up when it was done. It was such, to go through the building with people and show it off when it's in action is a whole different thing than, than at night. And so we do have a parent night coming up on March 15th, and I think I'm going to do a sign up again for parents that are busy during the day. Because it's just to see, to talk about a music program, yeah, our music program is great. To talk about our art program, yeah, it's great. And, you know, if you want your child to go to art school, we have a portfolio program. Until they walk in the room and they actually see the stuff happening, you walk into, you know, band, while the band is playing, you walk in the strings, while string is playing, you can say, you know, you're seeing it. This is the program. You know, it's not, just, you know, as I talk to people about us being a sports school and us, you know, you know, having emphasis there, well, you know, I talked a little bit about that with parents and saying, well, we have a lot of good athletes because you send us a lot of good athletes. But we also have a lot of other programs that don't have a section of a pay for that we're dedicating to them, at least on weekly. So, you know, we talked a little bit about that, but really seeing the building in action, I think. And I asked them to go and tell other people about that. That's why trying to combat any people deciding to go elsewhere, especially deciding to go elsewhere without proper information. Because I'm not sure what some of these other schools are offering compared to what we do. And you have to think about it, look at the numbers wise, have to get four choice students to agree that we have a, we, we have built a great program here for every student choosing charter school. So they go out and find, steal from the same pool from other towns, say, look at, come look at our program, and they're making a decision to come here because they see the great thing we built, but I need four of them for everyone that goes to charter school. It's just kind of, it's like they want to stomp my feet and say it's unfair. I can't even imagine being a school, you know, north of us that are struggling with numbers of choice being far greater out. I mean, we're in a position, we're three to one in. I mean, there are schools above us that, you know, in North, you know, Franklin that are, you know, three to one out, you know? And so just, that was my little charter stamp I can cry. Eighth grade.
I'd just like, just like to congratulate, I've heard two separate comments about your coffee thing, and they, parents were just really impressed. And the value of exposing parents to you, to Louise Law, that was the one that Louise Law was at? Was that giving, giving group tours?
We give group tours, Louise Law was involved.
Oh, that's what I heard. So somebody.
It was Sarah Mitchell.
Sarah, okay, so somebody called her.
And, and you heard Chell Miss Allen.
All right. But, so people were, the parents were really impressed with that and, because they hadn't been exposed to you before, and it's a good thing. So you did good. Well done.
Thank you. It was, it was good. And I have the one in the spring, anybody has been in the building during the school day, you know, please come to it. It's, it's powerful to see, like, what, we walked in the classrooms as they were going in, and we asked the teacher what they were doing, and, you know, they saw, you know, they walked into Dave Buckley's class and they saw them writing a business letter. You know, they had the letter projected on the board, what they were working on, and the kids were pointing out the different areas. I was, I was excited when I left, and then I went to a budget meeting with Marty. She remembered all my whole day.
Judy came in, was just, you know, maybe.
That's a good story.
Jacked it.
Sorry, eighth grade goes to Washington DC, the Monday after break, so we wish them a safe trip. Our Model UN club this past weekend went to BU conference, and we had an award winner, which is apparently they have about 80 awards, but of 1,400 students involved in it, Liam Kosky won an award for his participation there. And apparently they just, they just had a wonderful time. It's a great club. And then we have an AP information night, March 3rd, in our Frontier Library here to talk. We did this last year, and teachers, you know, come in and they talk about their AP programs and meet with parents to talk about the demands of AP and what their course content is and, you know, all that kind of thing. So parents can have an idea of planning AP courses and which one would be best for parents and children. What is best for them. That's kind of an overview. Come in, go on.
Thank you. Do you want to have a question to the other comments?
Had her first year on Model UN, go on the trip. Raiding the whole time. Had the best time ever. Loved everything about it. It's a great opportunity for kids that maybe didn't think that was something they'd be interested in, gave it a try. Really supportive group, so.
Agreed. Maybe we don't want to advertise that too much, though, because if, there's people that are attracted to it for the fun part of it. And I like the, I like the, the kids that are attracted to both the fun and the academic and the, but, but the more fun that we talk about, the more like the people that just really go and have fun.
Exactly. And lastly, superintendent?
Sure. Most of it I've already talked about. So it'll be a very short report. If it's making the way, it's way around, I spent the latter part of my report talking about the charter and, no, I probably sped all sorts of things. And I apologize for many of your papers are dirty. All of my papers fell in the parking lot as I was getting out my car, so some are in better states than others. So I did want to bring to your attention, because it was in the news, the number of bomb threats that were made during the month of January in Massachusetts and elsewhere. 34 bomb threats were received by January 26th in state, and over 100 school bomb threats were received along the East Coast, New Jersey, New York, and Maryland. 25 of the threats in state were sent via robo calls, and the remaining threats were received via email. None of the threats were real. And, but it caused quite a stir and discomfort and inconvenience for those schools that decided they needed to evacuate and, and some of them sent students home.
How lazy of a bomb threater can you be to do a robo call?
Well, I know. And actually, I heard recently that they, they are prosecuting, they found somebody in the eastern part of the state, and they are prosecuting them. And I frankly hope they make quite an example of it because it was extremely disruptive. We've been following the guidelines of the Massachusetts State Police and, which is the guidelines that we've had with our four-town safety meetings. We've talked on a regular basis with our local police or state police. So I ask principals to review protocols with the school secretaries and not on what is implied for a couple of weeks.
No, just going to say that these students don't realize how serious these things are. In a previous district, we had one, and I was working with the police. When these, if these students are convicted of this, they go on a no-fly list for the rest of their lives. So they really need to think about what they're doing if they, if they call it a bomb threat because they'll never be able to get out of an airplane for the rest of their lives.
Even as minors, it doesn't go into their minor, it doesn't seem like a minor.
No, in fact, you know, because there were so many that were made and it was such was such a disruption, um, most of them occurred in the eastern and central part of the state. I think there was one in Los Angeles. So they probably are going to make much more of an example of them, and they might normally. And as I mentioned earlier, we are beginning, we have a meet and greet. If you haven't gotten, uh, notice, if you're on the committee, uh, it will be coming soon on March third for our first Frontier contract negotiations. I hope to have, um, as I said, the elementary ones done. And the rest is about the charter and choice. The final paragraph there, um, I just wanted to bring to your attention, because I don't know that I had said that because the state has not had the money to fully fund the reimbursement formula for the last two years, the state has paid part for the first year reimbursement and none after that for the finals. So, um, you know, I, I think we all would love to have our household budgets that way. Oh, well, I just, you know, I don't have the money. I just don't pay to the plate bill this month. So, um, it is frustrating. So that's what I have.
Wanted to say this came out the other day, you know, and it's right. The district charter's school has surplus revenues. And they are supposed to be reimbursing the cities and towns from where the students came if they have surplus revenues.
Where would the surplus come from? Their two hundred thousand dollar salaries?
But there's some exceptions to the rule. Then if they've got major projects going, they escape. But one of the things that they were talking about is best getting all the charter bills, but, uh, their money is making sure that they have to have the money reimbursed.
Thank you. Okay, moving to inter, I just had a motion a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Yes.